At 7 o'clock, we call the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask Selectman Nordell to lead us tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm sure that's random. It's whoever is in the upper right-hand corner of my screen, and that depends on the last game turned on their camera.
I'm gonna remember that.
Totally random thing. All members of the Board of Selectmen are in attendance. Our next item is for A, approval of the regular meeting minutes from November 19, 2020. Has everybody had a chance to review them?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of November 19, 2020 as presented.
Is there a second? Motion made by Marie, seconded by Alan. Any corrections or discussion?
Yes, Sarah Muska, Selectman. Page three, the motion to appoint Natasha Holmes to diversity. It should be Diversity Council, I believe, but also I did not make that motion. Selectman Baker made that motion, and it was seconded by Selectman Nordell.
Yep, okay. So noted. Any other corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor of the minutes as amended? Selectman Baker. Nordell.
Hi.
Selectman D'Souza.
Hi.
Selectman Muska.
Hi.
Okay. Next two are corrections that we need to make from minutes that have already been adopted, which is why they're back on here. So, we, on the August 20th meeting, we had appointed Jamie Sidoriak as an alternate member. Her application was as an alternate member, and it was recorded as a regular member, so we just need to correct the minutes to note that.
Moved.
Is there a second?
Sarah Muska, Selectman, I'll second.
So, I've got Alan, motion, and seconded by Marie. Any discussion or corrections? All in favor? Selectman Baker. Selectman Nordell.
Hi.
Selectman D'Souza.
Hi.
Selectman Muska.
Hi.
Okay. Same holds true with 4C, with Joanne Drapo and Al Grant. They should have been listed as alternate members, so for the same reasons as Jamie on the previous meeting minutes, we just need to correct that for the record.
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Selectman Baker.
Hi.
Selectman Nordell.
Hi.
Selectman D'Souza.
Hi.
Selectman Muska.
Hi.
Thank you, folks. Public participation. Hold on one second. I had somebody waiting in the waiting room. Public participation. Wait a second, so her audio chimes in. So, we're now on to public participation. This is the, one of two opportunities for the public to address the board. Are there any members of the public who would like to, like to speak? Any members of the public who would like to speak? Oh, here we go. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak? Okay. Then we will move on to correspondence. I have two. The first is a communication from the Democratic Town Committee with a recommendation to fill the vacancy created on the Board of Finance by the resignation of Barbara Patano. This is just an FYI for you guys. We take no action on this. A regular member's vacancy on the Board of Finance is filled by the Board of Finance. So, this was sent to the Board of Selectmen, but it was also copied to the Chairman of the Board of Finance. It'll be their determination to make at their meeting on, what is it, the 16th of this month? Just because it was sent to the board in total, I just wanted to include it as a communication. The next item is another piece of, this is a piece of good news. This is from the Warehouse Point Library notifying us that they were awarded $27,146 to support reopening efforts associated with COVID-19. The funding for this comes out of the Coronavirus Recovery Fund, which is federal funding that's been made available to the state and is being administered through the Office of Policy and Management. $2.6 million have been earmarked to help state libraries, and the Warehouse Point Library received a little more than $27,000 for Wi-Fi, air purification, PPE, and touchless self-checkout, among other things. All good practices that will likely continue after the pandemic has ended, I'm sure. But that's a piece of good news. They shared that with us yesterday, I think, or day before perhaps. So, I just wanted to make sure you guys saw that and could join in congratulating them on getting that. Resignations and appointments. We have no resignations. We do have two reappointments, Bob Like and Gil Hayes, as regular members of the Economic Development Commission for terms expiring January 1, 2025. Is there a motion?
Motion to reappoint Gilbert Hayes to the Economic Development Commission for a regular member term expiring of January 1, 2025, and Robert Like to the same commission, regular member term expiring January 1, 2025.
Is there a second?
Selectman Nordell will second that.
Motion has been made by Alan, seconded by Charlie. I would just say that both of these gentlemen have a definite commitment to the mission of the commission, and I think they both represent the town well. So, I'm glad to see them willing to both be reappointed. Any other discussion? Selectman Baker. Selectman Nordell.
Hi.
Selectman D'Souza.
Hi.
Selectman Muska.
Hi.
All right. So, Karen. Where are we now? Okay. This next one is a state grant that the town has gotten for a number of years. It's to help, I'll say, reduce some of the accumulated paper that we don't need to keep. We're digitizing a bunch of things that have otherwise been sitting around in boxes. We have storage space down at the Town Hall Annex that the consultant over the last year has done a good job of trying to purge down. The state has awarded us that grant again, but we need to approve my signing of that grant and return it to the state by December 11. Things that we're going to be doing with the grant. There are imitation leather replacement binders that we're purchasing. There are land record binders that we're purchasing. We're microfilming certain town books. We're microfilming Board of Selectmen minutes. We are microfilming certain vital statistics. We're purchasing archival land record paper, and we're shipping whatever we don't need to, or whatever we can't digitize and can to the state library. Questions or comments on that? Most of the actual grant is boilerplate that's generated by the Attorney General's office, so you guys are gonna get into some of the nitty-gritty on the four-page contract. That is not really debatable.
So, the, are you, are we digitizing like deeds and stuff like that as well? I mean, what's, like, what's considered historical documents?
We, over time, we should look into that. We, as part of the renovation project here in Town Hall to make the building more COVID-compliant, we did look at trying to digitize Mylars in particular. There are a lot of files that we need to keep in the, not so much in the town clerk's office, although for sure there, but also in the town planner's office. I mean, we have tons, like literal tons and tons and tons of paper. And so, Mike DiMatto looked into what it would cost to get us to digitize some of that stuff. And I'll throw it out there, because we're coming up on budget season, but it's a big number. It would be, in order to digitize the files that he identified could be digitized, would cost us about $24,000, which is a lot of money. So, I mean, what we've been doing is, as the opportunity has presented itself to purge through the renovation project, we've been encouraging town departments to do that, to varying degrees of success depending on the department. Some, some records you need to keep by law in paper form in perpetuity. You know, that means that, that we gotta keep it somewhere. Some of the things we can get rid of, we have gotten rid of, and we actually brought in interns to help with that. This project is specific to records that fall within the jurisdiction of the town clerk. So, deeds would be part of that, but I don't see that enumerated on the scope of work that Amy gave me. Questions or comments?
He said, "How much do you think have already been done out of the Town Hall Annex, the purging that's been being done the last year over there?"
I don't know, because I haven't, I haven't seen that office since just after I took office. I have seen it, but it's been out a year. And it was something that Joanne was working with the consultant on, and she handed off to Amy when, when Joanne retired. Amy has been understandably working on election stuff for the last couple of months, and we're now cycling back to this. The bottom line is, it's $5,500 of free money to us.
Exactly.
And the grant requires that the town pay for any expenses above that number. There's no match associated with this, which I thought was actually pretty good considering it's a state grant. Typically, they come with at least some, if not a considerable match towards the grant amount, and there is no match associated with this. So, it's free money.
If there was a fire at the Annex, how much of our records would be permanently purged?
I don't understand your question. Can you say?
I mean, is it a fire-safe area?
I don't believe it is a fire-safe area. Joe, can you clarify that?
Correct. It is not in a fire-safe area. It's in an old classroom on shelves.
Yeah, so, the sooner we get it all digitized and out of there, the better. I know my house doesn't have historical data, because we preceded the last Town Hall fire where everything was not protected.
Jay, if I, if I may interrupt that, none of, none of the stuff that this consult, or that this grant is gonna do is going to digitize anything that's at the Annex. It's all work that's gonna be done, right? In the Town Hall, in the vault, the binders and stuff. None of that stuff is, all the land records and all that is there. Most of the records that are at Annex are treasurer records, tax collector, you know, there's no tax collector records, but mostly treasurer records. There are some selectmen records there that are just old records, but there's no land use records, other than the Mylars are stored there now. But there's no land use records or deeds or any of that. All that's stored right at the Town Hall in the vault, where it's perfectly safe.
So, Joy, last year anyway, Joanne had told me specifically that this guy was working down there.
Yes. He's, he's been working down there for the last three years.
Okay. So, they're just changing the scope of what he's working on in this grant project versus the previous ones that have been approved?
Yes. Um, yeah, I mean, our storage area is perfectly secure, but it's not for any, I don't want to say, I mean, important records, but there are no deeds. There are no, you know, there are just files of stuff we have to keep. He has done a tremendous job down there. If this means anything to you people, it does for me. The room was a disaster. He has totally purged thousands of, thousands of records that we didn't, no longer needed, or had no use for, or anything. So, the man does a tremendous job, and it's so tedious going through boxes, because a lot of the stuff wasn't even labeled properly. So, he's done a great job. I mean, Marie's, Marie's been down there. You all have it, and you're more than welcome. We've totally changed the whole scope of how we store stuff down there, but if you were down there previously, it was just boxes and boxes and boxes. There were just tapes for old reel-to-reel tapes. So, you know, just stuff that we really didn't need to keep anymore. The statute of limitations or however that records works it, it was ready to go, and he's done it all for us. I mean, we're talking about tax records we found that were going back to the 1900s.
Interesting to see how people used to pay for things. I have a copy of that.
A cow was $2.
And so, you know, that's kind of, that is sort of, I mean, not sort of, that, those are historical documents, and so there, I mean, you know, maybe from the standpoint of, you know, our records that we need to keep, that doesn't fall in that category, but certainly I bet you some historian would be interested in digging into that stuff.
Well, most, Joanne had most of that stuff go to the state, and it's in the state library now. So, most of the old, old records, you know, the interesting and the historical stuff went there.
So, you need a motion?
To authorize me to sign the contracts, the grant project contract with the state.
Make a motion to authorize the first selectman to sign, no, I just lost it. Grant, the Historical Documents Preservation Grant Contract 047-PC-21, Cycle 1, Fiscal Year 2021.
Is there a second?
I'll second that with the addition, do we need to put the amount in? Just a question. No?
Wouldn't hurt, I guess. I don't think you need to, but it wouldn't hurt.
Okay.
Go down and find it, unless you have, the amount of $5,500.
So, afterwards, Peg, I will need a copy of the meeting minutes for this prior to submission to the state, and it's due on December, I want to say December 11. They're gonna, as I read the, the template language, it's gonna require some sort of verification that I'm duly authorized, which would be the minutes.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Selectman Baker. Selectman Nordell.
Hi.
Selectman D'Souza.
Hi.
Selectman Muska.
Hi.
Okay. This next item is something I wanted to put on the radar screen, but isn't ready for action yet. I had a conversation with Democratic and Republican elections officials at the beginning of the week. It included Karen, Angelo, Denise, Marie, and Linda Sinsegala was invited but couldn't attend. Oh, and Christine DeBarge was there, too. One of the things that we're kicking around in terms of process improvements for local elections is to change District 2 from Town Hall to the Broadbrook Elementary School, which requires some, some due diligence to be done. Joe joined us for this meeting as well. We, for those of you who saw Election Day last month, the line was crazy, and the reality is, the meeting room in the Town Hall is just not, it's just not big enough to accommodate a large turnout. And so, the first thought was, well, we could put presidential elections over at the elementary school. Then it was like, well, sometimes a state or gubernatorial election can be not as big, but pretty close to as big. So, maybe we should put those two across the street with the elementary schools. And then, realistically, to stop, you know, voter confusion, it makes sense to consider, I think it makes sense to consider moving all general elections from Town Hall to the elementary school. So, we would keep budget referenda and primaries in Town Hall, because those are typically very low turnout events in comparison to presidential or gubernatorial elections. But by moving it across the street, we could utilize the same parking lot as it is now. We have significantly more space in the elementary school gym. There, there are multiple points of ingress and egress, so that we can have a dedicated indoor and a dedicated outdoor. There are facilities that are available for support staff, whether it be the cafeteria or, or just setting up tables behind breakout walls. It, it, logistically, I think, would make the process work better when we have 3,000 or 4,000 people per polling place participating in an election, which is something I, you know, I'm a big proponent of the higher the turnout, the better. And I think that if we can make that, that hour and a half wait in line a bit easier, I think we should look into that. So, there are some processes that we need to go through. The first thing that I wanted to do was talk to our elections officials to see if they thought that it was a good idea. If they said, "Absolutely not. That's terrible. That's completely unworkable," well, okay, that's the end of that conversation. I also spoke with the superintendent about the availability of the schools, thinking that there would need to be some coordination there, you know, a year's, a year's time out, so we could make sure that there wasn't school on Election Day. Well, she told me that they haven't done that for a long time, and that they use the day as a professional development day. So, having to coordinate around students in the building is actually not an issue. And I'd say that Christine was very gracious in terms of hosting the conversation and making the space available to us, and I'm certainly appreciative of that. So, we will need to do a couple of logistical things before we move forward. There's a whole process that's outlined in state statute about changing polling locations, and we'll need to get some help from the Secretary of the State's Office to get access to the software program that registrars and elections officials need to have available to them on Election Day. So, we'll need to get a second modem of sorts for that. But I wanted to float the idea by you guys before I went too much further with this, to see if you agree that it makes some sense, or if you think this is a dead issue, then, you know, we drop it. But I think that having people, at least in one polling place, wait an hour and a half is, we need to look at a process improvement there. Sarah.
Sarah Muska, Selectman. Do you know if we are considering getting any more tabulators? Because although the room is larger at the elementary school in the gym there, if we don't have additional tabulators, we're still gonna have a backup. So, I don't know if that was being discussed also?
That would be part of the budget process, which we can talk about separately and in the, in the winter. There's a cost associated with that. There's also, well, I mean, we can talk about the internal processes that, that happen in the polling place. I'm sure there's opportunity there for efficiencies, too, but I think certainly if we're looking, if we're looking to avoid people necessarily queuing up outside in the cold, this makes some sense to try. Other thoughts? Marie, you were in the discussion. Did I miss anything?
No, I think you covered it, Jay. The problem, problem isn't so much the tabulators, because those haven't been binded up, binded up at all in any of the elections that I've been involved in. But it's the tables where we have the setup for the actual voting, the little boxes there that they go into over at the Town Hall Annex. I mean, the Town Hall itself, they didn't have enough room to separate, to have what was really necessary for that presidential election because of the amount of space, because they had to be six feet apart from each other. Well, we didn't have that issue on our side, because we had plenty of room. But the tabulators themselves, having two on each side of town, once one on my side of town gets fixed, I think those should be okay moving forward. I would like to take a look at all the equipment and see if they can be upgraded, but that's a subject for another day. But I think it's a good idea to move it to a larger location.
And also, in, under, under non-COVID normal circumstances, it also would be less intrusive on staff throughout the workday. Having 3,500 to 4,000 people coming through a 5,000-square-foot building is disruptive. So, I'm not saying that's a driving force. I'm really interested in making the process smoother for residents who are waiting in line. But there's a lot of upsides. There are some logistical challenges to come across. But again, I'm just looking for guidance from you guys. If you think this is not worth exploring, then we stop. But I do, I do think it is. Anybody else? Charlie looks deep in thought, or reading a text?
No, I'm not reading a text. No, I just, I, I think anything to make any situation better is always worth looking into, as long as it's not costing us a lot of time or money, then, yeah, we should certainly look into it.
So, thumbs up? Sarah, you look less sold.
No, it's, I'm not less sold on it. I mean, you spoke with the registrars and everybody that's involved in, you know, this whole process and election, so it's not that. I just, I consider other aspects of it. You know, I know tabulators and things are part of the budget process, but I just, like, would hate us to move it there and then still have other hiccups that we didn't think of while we were discussing this. So, no, it's not that I'm not in favor of it. If it can be a smoother process and, and not be a lengthy wait for people, then I'm fine with it, as long as the registrars and everyone else was involved in the discussion are, and are in favor of it, too, then I think it's a good thing.
Tax refunds.
Sarah Muska, Selectman, I will move to approve the tax refunds totaling $2,009.56.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Selectman Baker. Selectman Nordell.
Hi.
Selectman D'Souza.
Hi.
Selectman Muska.
Hi.
Jason II was Alan.
Yes. Sorry, Peg. I try and call those out when we do them.
Thank you.
Selectmen's reports. I have a short one this evening, shortish one this evening. On November 20th, I met with Representative-elect Foster at her request to talk about how she can be supportive of the town of East Windsor in the upcoming legislative session. She has really hit the ground running, diving into issues that are popping up here and there that require state-local partnerships, and I think she's gonna do a great job, and I'm really excited to work with her. I've invited her, Representative Hall, and Senator Anwar to our December 17th Board of Selectmen meeting to discuss their priorities for the 2021 legislative session with us, which is a practice I hope to continue each year moving forward, bringing the legislative delegation in to talk with us about the upcoming session. And then, schedules permitting, maybe we could do one in the middle of the session and a session roundup. On the 27th, my wife and I continued one of our favorite Christmas traditions and took our young son to get our Christmas tree at Simon Family Farm. Supporting local businesses is more important this year than it's ever been, and you usually find that local business owners can be more creative and engaging. We got a beautiful tree, a handmade wreath, some locally grown Christmas goodies, and took time to visit with two Christmas calves on the farm, which was the biggest hit of all for, for Elliot. On November 28th, I was pleased to join the East Windsor Police Union as they hosted their annual Stuff a Cruiser event. This annual tradition is a significant source of support for the Department of Community Services' annual holiday toy drive. The town is also now taking donation of hams and turkeys from Christmas dinner. The town is also now taking donation of hams and turkeys from Christmas dinner, or for Christmas dinner. If anyone would like to make a donation of toys or a $25 gift card towards those holiday meals, they can drop them off Town Hall Annex at 25 School Street. On November 29th, I hosted a discussion with Senator Anwar and Representative-elect Foster about the issue of crumbling foundations. There will be a need for advocates in the community to reach out to the General Assembly to ask for additional state funding for remediation work as the session gets underway. Local residents personally affected by the emergency were there to share their stories, and we certainly appreciate them doing that. There will be follow-up discussions held after New Year's on this issue, and anybody who wants more information about it can contact my office at 860-698-1334. On November 30th, I joined the East Windsor Rotary Club as they distributed personal protective equipment to several entities around town. The club donated material to Geisler's Supermarket, Fresh River Rehabilitation Facility, Eye Care at Touchpoints, and Harkins Market. I thought these locations selected by the club were particularly poignant because of the significant role played by grocers during the early days of the pandemic and because of the emotional toll borne by nursing homeowners. From first responders to medical staff to grocery clerks, 2020 really did prove that there were many more heroes among us than we may have known. That's all I have. Selectman D'Souza.
I'd like to start off by thanking all the residents and businesses that have given freely to others in this difficult holiday season. East Windsor's strong is an understatement, as I have witnessed such generosity during this holiday season. Please follow the recommended CDC policies regarding this pandemic. On November 25th, I participated in the Zoom meeting for the Diversity Council. On the 28th, I was honored to also be able to stand proudly with the Eastwood Police Department members during the Stuff a Cruiser event held at Walmart. On the 29th, I also attended the crumbling foundation meeting at Town Hall Annex. On November 30th, I participated in a Zoom meeting with the Register of Voters, First Lieutenant Jason Balzer and Superintendent Christine DeBarge. On December 1st, the Economic Development Meeting was canceled. And thank you for electing those two members tonight for that board. And on December 2nd, the Bradbrook Mill Remediation Meeting was canceled, and it was when I questioned it because it was on, and I knew they hadn't been meeting, I questioned it in the expiration of all the letters. So I don't know if that's the end of that committee, or if they need to be, revoked it in or not, but their terms have all expired.
Well, you, you had, you had a busy couple of weeks considering the holiday.
Yep. But there were all things that we needed to do, especially the crumbling foundation. So kudos to you for putting that together for those residents.
That was resident-driven, for sure.
Yep. That's all I got.
Charlie?
Too well, I feel lazy now. I don't have any official report. I haven't had any meetings since our last meeting. I too did attend the Stuff a Cruiser event. Me and my oldest went and at the last minute donated ourselves. It was good to see they had a full trailer. They were packing up early because they were all done. And it's good to see that amongst COVID, there's still a lot of people out there who have the ability to give others less fortunate. I will say that, or announce that the East Windsor PTO is doing a centerpiece workshop as a way to raise money this year. They're doing it virtually via Zoom. For $25, you can have a entire kit delivered straight to your door. And then myself and Sarah Muska, our fabulous floral designer, will be showing everyone via Zoom how to build their own centerpiece for the holidays. You can go on the East Windsor PTO's Facebook page or their website for more details on that. And that's it, that's all I have.
Selectman Muska. Is she lagging for anybody else?
Is that?
You're in.
Can you hear me?
I'll be, yeah.
Can you hear me or no?
Better.
Sorry, I don't know what happened here. Oh, gosh. Well, I can't get it to load, but a lot of it is repetitive. I attended the Stuff a Cruiser as well. It was great to see how generous our community was, given the pandemic. I also attended the crumbling foundations meeting, which was on Sunday, very informative by Dr. Anwar for residents that are affected, explaining the process of where to go from here. I, the Parks and Rec Department is being very creative this holiday season. I'd like to commend Melissa and her staff. There is a Holiday Lights contest. There's a sugar cookie recipe swap book that's being put together. They're doing the Grinch around town and just really creative ways to get the community, you know, engaged and involved. And a lot of people I know, especially my grandmother, who's been going to the senior center, and Melissa's been doing a lot of creative things to still engage with people. I know they're real, you know, this is things that they look forward to. This is sometimes their only social interaction. So whether it be virtual or creative ways in person, I'd just like to commend Melissa and her staff for doing that. But Board of Ed was canceled due to Thanksgiving, so really don't have anything else to say, but thanks.
Alan?
Okay, I had missed my planning and zoning meeting due to work obligation, but I will say that they, they had a pretty light schedule anyway. The only thing of note in that meeting was a new public hearing for the special use permit renewal for WSG LLC, which is on Wapping Road, the newer of the two pits that will be shut down as part of the solar thing, should that go forward. So if anybody's interested in having a say in what's going on over there, next meeting would be the time for that. Wetlands, Wetlands had a couple of interesting things going on. We approved the Wetlands permit for Warehouse Point Fire Department addition. And there was also an agent decision that I thought was interesting for Hamilton Sunstrand at the, at 8 Mill Street. They wanted to do some, some boring to further, you know, kind of, I guess they call it characterize the area. So we took that as a good sign that at least somebody's thinking about what's going on over there and, and maybe some action is forthcoming. So that's all I have for you.
All right, thank you all. Public participation, this is the public's second opportunity to address the board. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak? Any members of the public who would like to speak? Being done, we will have a very brief executive session. There, Peg, I don't anticipate there'll be any further action, but I would ask for a motion to go into an executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into an executive session at 7:30, 8 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made by Marie, seconded by Alan. All those in favor, Selectman Baker? Selectman Norde?
Hi.
Selectman D'Souza?
Hi.
Selectman Muska?
Hi.
All right, we are in executive session at 7:30. It is 7:50, we're coming out of executive session. Unless there's further business to come before the board, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Selectman Norde will second.
Motion's been made and seconded, it's non-debatable. Selectman Baker? Selectman Norde?
Hi.
Selectman D'Souza?
Hi.
Selectman Muska?
Hi.
And we are adjourned at 7:51.